All right. I will call this meeting to order here at 3:09 PM. We're running just a few minutes late as we got ourselves settled into Green County. Oh, my, thanks very much. Thank you all for being here. Those of you who came in person and those who are joining us remotely. Hope that we can move efficiently through the agenda today. We've got a lot of ground to cover with the director's evaluation and our closed session later on. So we will get started with the normal business. Do we have a motion to adopt the meetings from last, the minutes from last month's meeting? Or would anybody like to make any changes before we do? No? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept them.
I have a motion to be accept the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, the motion will carry. Announcements, I want to say, oh yes.
Need the resolution about the hybrid meeting.
I'm sorry, can you pull up the my most basic function? This meeting has been called to order as a hybrid meeting held pursuant to and in compliance with Almarle County's ordinance number 20-a16, an ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. Sorry for leaving that out at the top. Thank you for the motion to approve the minutes from last time. We had a vote, all in favor. Do you have, oh, announcements, first of all. Ginny, would you like to say anything about?
My name is Ginny Reeves, Science and Manager at the Green County Library. I'm very, very happy to welcome all of you today. Really glad to have some of you out here for the first time. We're excited at the Green library. Go ahead and do. Please, the case numbers don't keep going up, but we are going back into in-person and hybrid and some virtual probably programming also. But we, we have a whole scheduled program coming up for all ages, starting in the including pollinators and class programming that new administration art classes, yoga classes. We're doing a lot of our classes in cooperation with Green County. First of all, so that's been a really wonderful collaboration so far. And they have made it easier for us to use the Green Commons area center by the administration building so that we can have some of our programs outside, which is a little safer. And they have a very large blow-up projector screen and a portable projector. And they're going to set up everything that we need to project supplies or sell to the workshop. They're going to do that for us. That's really exciting. We have a bioblast coming up at a local farm where the farm owner has, is attempting to convert some of his land over to native plants throughout the area. So we're going to do the first bioblast on his farm and see what's growing there now. And we can continue to monitor that at City of Science throughout, throughout the years and see if his native planting increase the number of pollinators and grow. Bioblasts. Getting way three seeds, native seeds at a lot of these programs. And also a really exciting project that we hope to have starting in the fall that is supported by foundation money that's for this ranch here. We hope to convert some of our old landscaping, which was put in at the time that we built this building, which was in 2003, that's kind of, you know, gone down still a little bit over time. Very labor intensive to take care of and actually cost a fair amount of money to take care of. So we, we hope to really, not the RFP process. RFQ process, find a vendor who specializes in native plants for our area and have an installation for some of the beds outside so that they'll support the pollinators and provide those for our area and be something crowded and be setting good examples and also conflict. So anyway, yeah, we're very excited about the summer coming up. We have a summer reading kickoff program. And this is the first time we're running this program since the pandemic started. It's had a hiatus. This is a big like street fair type program that we do every summer. And we invite everybody from the community to get off a little kid. And the main point of this programming is to let kids know that when the reading program is starting, it runs June, July and August, kids can get prizes for reading and general encouragement for reading all summer. So we'll have all that to be hopefully to be proud on Monday, June 5. And family programs are coming back. There's always been a big drawing, Green County for kids during the summer. And we've, you know, really not been able to do those during the pandemic either. But we'll be running those down to the Green Common. So there'll be outside room for as many kids as want to come. And we are starting storytime back in person. We'll have two storytimes. We have a new children's coordinator at our, at our branch or children specialist if you haven't heard. She's really excellent. Her name is Cindy Ritter. And she is starting back up with the toddler storytime, which is for ages one and two. And then she'll be continuing the three and four-year-old storytime that has been virtual during the winter. But we will be back in person. So that's really exciting. Anyway, you can find out about all these programs at JMRL dot org by looking at our calendar online. And we hope we'll do it sometime around Christmas. And welcome. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as someone who hasn't been here, this is a beautiful, I look forward to the doors yet.
There is one other announcement.
I was going to ask, do we have other announcements from board members before we go to public comment?
Yeah, I did. The announcement is that Jim, James West is stepping down from the library board. He's resigning his position as the Green trustee to the library board, which is about a month before his term is to expire anyway. So Jim Rouse is working with Green County to appoint a new representative to the library board for Green County.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Jim from all of us for all the work that you've done on this board over the years. That's very much appreciated. Any further announcements from any other trustees? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. We have somebody here with us for public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Myra Anderson, and I'm a Charlottesville native and a regular visitor of Jefferson Madison Regional Library. I'm also a descendant of the enslaved families of Monticello and the enslaved laborers of the University of Virginia. I am president of RePlank Roots Descendants Alliance, and it is in that role that I appear before you today. I am here to make a formal request for the library to change its name. For a number of years now, our community has been undergoing a racial reckoning. The efforts have resulted in schools, organizations changing their names and statues being removed. We find it deeply troubling that in light of all that has occurred locally and even nationally, the Lee statue, August 12th, George Floyd, and even most recently the shootings in Buffalo, our library has remained silent and continued to bear the name of two slave owners. We believe the library is long overdue for a name change and that maintaining a, that name of a white supremacist is maintaining white supremacy in a space that is supposed to feel inclusive and equitable. Jefferson has Monticello and Madison has Montpelier. They will never be forgotten. The way we see it, the library's role is for the stories of Jefferson and Madison to be told inside the building in books, not outside by the name of the building. The painful truth is that many of our figures that we have upheld throughout history and continue to were white supremacists. It is one thing to provide context of the time in books, but it's another thing to honor it with names. The city of Charlottesville no longer celebrates Jefferson's birthday, and the health department changed their name for a similar reason to the ones mentioned. And I'll pause there and read the statement from the health department where they decided to change their name. Changing our name is symbolic of the deeper work we are doing as an organization to create an inclusive and equitable environment for our staff, clients, and to acknowledge and address the impact of racism on health. And they go on to say, to make everyone feel comfortable and feel included when they come to seek services in the health district. And we know some people didn't. We know that Thomas Jefferson is associated with slave holding practices and slave owning practices. And some of the descendants of the slaves live in our community. And we really wanted to make it an inclusive environment. And that's from Dr. Denise Bonds, who just retired. And I will leave this statement with you. But back to my point, with the Swanson Black recently unveiled, highlighting a monumental civil rights victory, it is greatly overshadowed by a library whose name honored two of the persons who made the framework for the civil rights struggle past and present. Harder racial reconciliation involves examining the names of buildings and not continuing to hold on to relics of a dark racist past. Black Lives Matter, the names of buildings matter. And I believe it is time to move forward with a new name for Jefferson Madison Regional Library. And I also want to point out that deciding to change a name and then figuring out what that name should be are two completely separate things. So it should not be held up just out of idea of what are we going to change it to? They're two completely separate, separate things. And in closing, I want to strongly encourage you, as you are considering this request, to listen to those who histories are the most weighing. It requires listening to those whose ancestors were enslaved, sold, segregated, oppressed to fully comprehend the pain that is caused by continuing to honor this name. Libraries have the power to create a welcoming environment for all. And through actions such as a name change that can reconcile that past. And this is a call to action. So my request is not only to read, this is going public comment, but it is also that you put this on your agenda and begin to have discussions about this. And that it's not a long drawn-out process and that you engage input from the community, specifically from the community who is most hurt by this. I've lived here my whole life, and I can tell you that there are some people who won't even enter the building because of the name on the building. That's real talk. So I'm telling, I'm putting this before you as a call to action. And I hope, I sincerely hope that you will take the words that I have said to you seriously. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the comment. We will have an opportunity later in the agenda to discuss future agenda items. And that will be before our closed session. So I hope everybody has an opportunity to stay with us. Do we have any other public comment? I don't believe any in person, unless I'm mistaken, any online?
If anyone, as a Zoom attendee, that would like to make comment, you can raise your hand now.
Okay, looks like none. So moving on, we have decided to forego our trustee continuing education program for this afternoon in the interest of time. We'll pick that up again next month. But Ginny, thank you for educating us about everything the Green County has going on here. That feels very much like the kind of internal organizational presentation that we would normally have here. New business, we only, oh, I'm sorry, committee appointments and reports, I'm getting ahead of myself. We had meetings of the five-year plan committee this past week. I had some technical problems and wasn't able to finish that. But let's see, who, I'm sorry, who's in charge of that report? Lisa, thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. The five-year committee met. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you can hear me.
The five, the five-year committee met a few weeks ago. It was a very successful meeting. We went through in great detail the five-year report that had been broken out actually into three different categories about like where this would be. And I thought it was an excellent discussion. And I, I believe that my task here today is to recommend that the board vote in or approve the work that the five-year committee has done. Now, David, again, I'm so sorry if I'm getting this wrong. But that is what I would like to bring forward today. And Tony was also there. But I thought it was an excellent meeting. We, we, there was no, I thought, contention around the priorities that the library has set. And I think lots of encouragement and good feeling about the progress that the organization has made, especially in the context of our trying times, that the, that the organization has made on the, on the five-year plan. So we were, and we voted in favor of it. And we, well, we didn't vote, but we thought we would come to you today and ask that the full board endorse that plan. Is that correct? Am I, am I right on that?
I think, Lisa, the, the committee left with a recommendation for three changes to the current plan that the board can consider today and then vote on next month if they like. And we included those in, in your handout. So do you mind if I briefly go through those?
Please do. Thank you.
Share my screen. And these should be in your handouts as well. So the main thing is that the, the board technology committee and the staff technology advisory committee have been working on an update for goal number two, objective number one, to have a new technology objective. So this whole thing is included in your packet here. The old goal just said, technology, JMRL will improve infrastructure and expand technology-related services in order to provide high-quality digital and technological resources that the community needs for schoolwork and life. And then the objective said basically, C, appendix A, and then appendix B. There are two five-year, there are two three-year plans inside the five-year plan. So that included lots of detail here. I'm not going to read all this to you. And the technology committee decided that this would be better off. Still scrolling. This would be better off as a series of broader goals for the board. And Kayla and staff would work on the more detailed thing. So instead, they're providing the same goal, but with six ongoing objectives and a few by the end of fiscal year 23 and 24 objectives that state what the boards and what the board is looking for from JMRL Technology. So that's the, the major work that was done, that was brought to the five-year plan committee. The other two changes were the discussion about goal number five, objective number six, was about running fiscal analysis to determine the impact of a fine-free library. And in discussions, discussing this with AJ, we, for one, there was a pandemic in the middle there that kind of disrupted data collection on fines. So on the one, on the one hand, it gave good data on what happens if you don't collect any fines. On the other hand, we discovered that we didn't have the capacity necessarily to get the data that we need to make a decision there. So the goal has changed a little bit to say, restructure the way that we are collecting information about money that's coming in as fines and fees so that we can, the board can make a decision about how to, how to best move forward. Right now, the biggest sticking point is that all the cash and checks and credit cards that come in for fines, fees and lost books are in one lumped area. So we need to figure out how much of, what percentage of that revenue is from lost books, which presumably still be charged versus fines for late materials.
And that will give us the information we need.
That will give us hopefully the data that we need for, for the board to make an education. And then goal number five, objective number two, we had a goal for fiscal year 21 to create a work group of trustees, staff, friends of the library, community members in Charlottesville and Almarle County staff to plan and advocate for the renovation of the central library. The five-year committee decided to move that forward to fiscal year 23. So that would mean the fiscal year that starts July.
I'm in the meeting.
That would mean July 1 to begin that work.
Of 23.
Of 23, but July, no, July 1 of 22, so, so two months.
Yes. But we would be target that delivery, which is just creating a work group. It's not actually the work group doing anything, would be essentially a year from now.
It would be within that year. Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be, it could be in July.
Okay. Correct, yeah. So I agree, it doesn't say by the end of. Okay, so it could begin in July of this year is what you're saying.
This could begin at any time. We've had discussions with the friends of the library, with city staff, with county staff. We had many discussions about this. But in light of the CIP struggles both have been facing, largely with their, their funds tied up and trying to figure out their schools.
And who is the single sort of owner of this to make it happen?
You. Yes.
And if I'm sitting here today, is it your guesstimate that it's going to happen closer to Ju, July of 22 or June of 23?
The logical thing is to start working in around the budget cycle coming up. So that would be towards the end of the summer, beginning of the, of the fall. JMRL tries to get our operational budget into the hands of the jurisdictions by Thanksgiving so that they have time to consider while they're doing their budget. Same for the CIP, we would want things to be in there.
I mean, as you can see from my questions, I'd like to see this happen.
Sure. Yeah.
It's just creating a work group which is identifying folks, it's not doing stuff yet. So to me, it's not a huge lift. But those answers make sense. I would be, I guess I'll say I would, if it ends up being June of 2023, I would find myself in a position of asking why did it take so long? I guess. And I suppose if it takes that long, there would be an answer, I guess. But I'll be.
And you found to have a date on it?
No, you've given me a timeframe of sort of expectations, and that's really what I was looking for. Thank you.
So the committee is recommending those changes to the strategic plan, and they'd like to present them for a vote.
Okay. Any further questions on that from anyone? Well, thank you all very much for the work on that. Wendy, do you have a nominating committee?
My own name. I say the nominating committee. I spoke with several members, board members, and Tony had declared interest. So he was drafted enthusiastically. And so he is, Tony will be the nominee for president. And Alita Childs has agreed to be on the nomination or for the vice presidency. And I think Meredith contributed a lot to the conversation and was also considering it and more than willing and happy to participate in any way. But I think we we established a little bit of precedence with having some outreach to the other counties. And I think that is really good if we maintain that when we can. And, and Alita's been so forceful and effective in getting the new Nelson underway. And we want to keep that enthusiasm and capture why we can. And then, of course, everybody's like, well, I don't know if I can do it next time. So we have, Meredith will be here, Alita will be here. And I've already asked Tony that he can always stay for another term. People are reluctant and still have more to learn. So that's, that's all positives. You know, we have a great person in charge, he's experienced. We have two board members who are new, but definitely experienced and interested and enthusiastic. So I think we're on the right path. And so we will vote on next month, right?
Sure, I think the ballot say June is the vote. The nominating committee is putting forth.
We are putting forth Tony for president and Alita Childs for vice. Oh, and I would like, if anybody else is interested or would like to be considered, of course, an election means an election. So let me know if you would like to do that, would like to participate or hold an office.
Well, thank you very much. And yeah, just to reiterate, please reach out to Wendy if you still hold any interest. And, and we will have the vote next month. One small item of new business, again, something we'll look at this month and vote on next. In your packet for today is the new board meeting and budget schedule for fiscal year 23. Look at this every year, just to approve our dates. We've already had a little bit, oh, no, that was around closings. I'm sorry, I'm getting my wires crossed. David, is there anything you'd like to aware of on the respective calendar?
So the, the, the dates are all set in stone here. These are sticking with the fourth Monday of each month. The only question was that this is, is when you all would like to travel out to the jurisdiction. So it has been our tradition that at least once a year, there's a board meeting in each of Green, Louisa, Nelson. And then we rotate a non-northside branch for the other, for the other outside of, of northside meetings. It's central libraries turn, so that's good timing, Mike, for the, the board to be there in November, basically right around budget time. And then the other ones were Louisa first in February, Green next in March, and Nelson next in April, which roughly follows the budget cycling of those jurisdictions. It's usually Louisa first, then Green, then Nelson. So in the past, we've had some discussion about travel in February, March.
What's this head? I think that's why we're here in May, we decided.
Right, yeah, yeah. I think.
They get backfired, but.
Louisa generally doesn't get as much snow as the rest, as the rest of the, the region. So I would think February would be okay. So that was the question. Then the other question is whether or not the board was interested in any changes around the holidays, which in the past, you know, that's your prerogative. Now's the time to talk about that.
Any questions or comments from anybody?
Yeah, as I recall in the past, we've, we've moved the December meeting up so that it doesn't fall in the week between Christmas and New Year's.
I think the problem is, Tony, if we move it up, so Christmas is strange this year. It is on a, well, it's not strange, but it is on, it is on a Sunday. So that would be, oh, wait a minute, that's right.
Yes. On a Sunday, and the 28th would be a Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that should say the 26th. So that's a, that's a mistake there. But the library will be closed, no, I'm sorry, never mind. The library's closed, it was the 26th and 27th, that's per your vote last month, right? So the 28th would be the, the next day after that. So Tony's suggestion would be the 19th?
Yeah, just as, as a consideration, I've got, I've got no agenda for either one, but I just know in the past, we've, we've done that.
That makes some sense to me, Tony, because it keeps it on a Monday, too, instead of pushing it into an unusual day.
Right.
I think that sounds like a good idea. If anyone has any objections, I'd say speak now or, or we might, you know, consider that when we take the vote next, next month.
So I'll present one with the 19th for December.
The order of travel, look okay to everybody? I don't think there's much need to fiddle with that.
Looks good.
Thank you so much for organizing that. Thank you. And thank you, Tony, for reminding us about the, the meeting so close to, on the 26th. That's, that's not a great time, so.
We'll have one more, another month to continue thinking on that. So if anybody, you know, lines it up with their work calendar or personal travel and finds something else, please let us know before next month, and we can make further adjustments before we take the vote, if need be. Okay, old business, we're going to take a few votes on policies and the equipment purchase that we talked about last month. David, I'll, I'll lean on you for brief recaps here, if you don't mind, as we move through them.
Sure, and Mike, jump in if I've possibly committed to that one. But the idea was that we had a reading, or I guess a negative reading last month, the presentation about policies 2.61, vehicle use, and 2.7 parking reimbursement for central staff. And the idea was that both of these were now covered in the employee handbook and no longer needed to exist as board-level policy. So the reading last month was to vote today to remove these two policies. And then the third was to And then the third, uh, was to accept the new website policy, so the first reading was last month. And the, um, policy committee's been working on that for a while, and there are no changes in any of those documents from last month.
Okay, uh, we'll take these, well, we'll lump the first two together, uh, vehicle use and parking reimbursement for central staff. Um, any last questions, or do I hear a motion to remove policies two-point-six-one and two-point-seven?
I'll move that we remove those two from the policy manual.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all very much. Uh, the website policy. Um, any last questions there, or do I hear a motion approving the new website policy for?
I move that we accept the new website policy.
Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all very much. All right, and the last item here?
Yes, so this was, uh, this was, um, from the Budget Finance Committee. It's a request that the board approve the authorization to purchase new computers, uh, from this year's operational funds rather than just for twenty-three's. Uh, just for twenty-three's equipment budget, uh, one of the main driving forces here is trying to get these in sooner rather than later because of the supply chain issues that we've been having getting machines in. So the, uh, cost is, the, the amount that we're looking to spend on this is thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. So the motion would be along the lines of I author, I move that the board authorize staff to expend thirty-one-five-hundred to purchase new computers from operating costs in fiscal year twenty-three, and it just so happens. I've got that written down.
I make the motion as shown on the screen.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, okay, and that will, uh, complete our old business portion of the agenda. David, library director's report.
Yes, thank you. Um, as Myra mentioned, then there was an event on Thursday the nineteenth last week to unveil the Swanson versus UVA historic marker at the Central Library. Uh, remarks were made by Mayor Snook, Chair Price from Elmore County, Dr. Rick Turner, and Dean Risa Goyebuff from the law school. There's now a permanent home outside the Central Library there for that historic marker. Thanks to Alita, Mike, and Thomas for attending the events. I wanted to give a brief update on the status of the new website because the tech committee did not meet today, as we have been discussing. Tech committee has been apprised of this via email, but just to let you all know, JMR is seeking a new vendor to host all web assets and has been going through a lengthy request for a quotation process. Uh, hopefully, we are working out the details with the winner of that process this week and can begin the migration process. So the technology committee will need to get together this summer to talk about where that process is, basically, and then we can report back to the full board on it. But it's, it's slower than, than we had anticipated because of the need to go out to bid for this service. Any questions about that?
Did you say you think this week?
I'm hoping this week, yeah.
So my understanding was you had bids, and you, have you selected a bid, or that's, you're, but you're sort of negotiating some?
There, there's no contract awarded yet.
Yeah, that's what you're.
There's, either the city and the, and the vendor are working out the contract.
Contract.
But I, I think is a strong word, I'm hoping for this week, but, uh, you know, everybody's a little.
Vendor identified, and that's, that's where we are on the process, great.
But there's many. But if that doesn't work, there are other eligible vendors. Um, I thank Alita for her help, uh, with myself and Sylvia Elder from the NAACP Education Committee and reviewing the scholarship applications that JMR received for the JMR NAACP scholarship. We also have selected a scholarship winner there, and we are, uh, in the process of getting in touch with the scholarship winner to let them know, uh, that they have been selected. And with that comes the opportunity for an internship this summer as well, or throughout the school year, really depending on their schedule. So hopefully, we'll make an announcement this week about that. JMR is excited to welcome the How To Festival back to the Central Library, very happy with the results. Hundreds of people came in to see short fifteen-minute segments on how to get various things done from, uh, it was, it was varied. There was a lot of stuff there, including a fire truck, which was, of course, the biggest hit. Uh, Kayla Payne and I tag along with the Nelson Memorial Staff on their staff training day to visit a twenty-four-hour library in Franklin County. Uh, this is a very impressive setup there, the county is working on a new, uh, pocket park that is owned by their Parks and Rec there. And it is a, like a red box for library materials, basically. It's fairly big, it has three rows of library materials, books, DVDs, things like that. You go, you scan your card, you look through the choices there, and it drops off a book for you, basically. Uh, Franklin County was able to fund this with, uh, CARES money a few months ago. Um, Nelson is very interested because they still have some Brunelson Library money left over from the, the renovation project there. So, uh, the requirements would be the machine, uh, place, a concrete slab, data and power, and a structure that goes on top of it, similar to a large bus stop, basically, like you can walk in and out of it, but it's roofed and, and semi out of the elements. Um, Alita and Susan and I met with some representatives from Nelson County to have a very preliminary discussion. Like, are you interested in this, i- if we were to try to make this happen? Because this is not something that JMR could do without direct partnership with our jurisdictional partners there. Um, I think they are interested, and we're gonna keep discussing, this would be an extension cost for the regional agreement. That means that they would need to contract separately in order to pay for it because it's outside the Nelson Memorial Library. Um, but they, they are very interested in it, it'd be a good way to serve the county in areas that aren't near Livingston. Um, we left that the staff would start to work on, the JMR staff would start to look on what a budget would look like. So the, the fundraisers could probably pay for the machine and the covering on it, if costs came in similar to what they were in Franklin County. The last time I priced one of these machines, it was, it was a long time ago before I was in this job, and it was a half million dollars. So the, what they paid for it was under a hundred thousand dollars, so the cost had come down. And so they've ramped up production during COVID, basically, because it's the mitigation effort. And we hope to present the idea to the Nelson Board of Supervisors before budget season for fiscal year twenty-four really gets rolling. So just to have a discussion with the full board there, just to gauge their interest and talk about where we could best serve the community there and, uh, what kind of ongoing maintenance and cost would be required for it.
So it's preliminary, is the, um, idea to, you use the word extension, is the, is the idea to, to extend the hours near the, the main branch? Or is it to extend the geographic reach to some other, you know, more far-flung area of the?
The idea would be to get away from the, at the, the physical location of the library in Livingston and get to another population center that can't get as easily into.
And then would be, and I know it's, again, it's preliminary, would the idea be that our existing van or truck route would go and service that machine?
It, it, it would require some service from, uh, probably IT staff more than anybody, you know, because it is a big complicated piece of machinery that needs to integrate with our. But if you talk about getting the books.
Getting the materials.
Yeah, so, so the books would likely be selected from the Nelson Memorial's collection there, because they've got a fresh new collection there. And it would be some combination of staff there using their outreach vehicle, which is gonna be there any day now. And, uh, regional staff being able to do that. Depends on what the demand is, too, which is the biggest question the county has as well, and how much demand are we anticipating?
Okay, but Plan A in your mind preliminarily is not necessarily that the, is it a truck or a van that circulates? The truck would not be the, uh, add a stop.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far in the planning, but in my, and when I'm conceptualizing it, no, that's not the primary source for getting. Okay, so that's just the very, you know, since we did talk with Nelson County about it, I wanted the board to be aware that Alita and I have had that initial contact with Susan. And finally, a summer reading challenge, uh, which Jenny mentioned, starts June first, everyone kick off events planned across all JMR. The Bean Stack Challenge actually should be live today, so if anyone has, is an early adopter for Bean's back stack, you can get on, start tracking your summer reading as we speak. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, before we move on, are there any other matters that were not on the agenda today that anyone would like to discuss? Or any matters to put on future agendas? Um, I would like to. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I'm gonna say the same thing you are, Thomas, and, you know, we'd like to have the potential name change for the, for the system as an agenda item going forward.
Thank you very much.
Me too, me too, Lisa too, I'd love that.
All right, we will, um, put that on our new business, uh, number one for next month.
And what, what do we think is the scope of that agenda item? Are we, uh, obviously, we're not taking a vote that day, that's not our usual mode. Are we talking about, obviously, the commenter mentioned engaging the community? Are we talking about how to plan for a, uh, a, a, a process of gathering input? Sure, I, I'm just. I'm, I'm, maybe now is the time to kind of set some expectations of what the, what we're, what we would be accomplishing next at the first meeting.
Very fair.
Question, any thoughts?
Yeah, that's what I would do, I would put it out to you all, I don't, I don't see it as being, uh, for me to dictate the direction of all of our conversation. I'm interested in, in knowing what your goals are and how we can help achieve them here, so. We can have the conversation now.
It sounds like making.
We can have the conversation, you know, by email, by phone, in the month in between, but, yeah, well, you know.
Make, make a plan to engage the, engage the question, is maybe what I would suggest as the discussion frame, this discussion scope, does that sound right to everyone at, at, for a first step?
I understand, I think that, I think, I appreciate what Mike is helping us to do, is to say, how are we going to proceed? And engaging the question is a first step. And then, I think, I, I, I wonder, is like, I think this is up, is it up to us to decide how to do this? How to create the public process, but I think the fir-, I, I like how, um, Myra separated it into two different points. One point is, do we want to change, do we believe that we can change the name, or will we change the name, yes or no? And then the next thing is, what would it be changed to? But I think to get to the first point, it's definitely worth, um, thinking about how, how to engage that question and take it seriously. Um, and to have a conversation about, you know, does the name represent what, you know, the, the public, you know, in a way that is fully representative? And not just, um, what it used to be, therefore, it's historical and therefore must remain the same. I don't know how or where that's crafted in terms of our bylaws and where it's written, and are there regulations around it, et cetera?
And that seems like a good first step for me to work with on David in terms of what we can do to prepare, uh, to make this an effective conversation next month. Start to lay out where this lives and what the mechanisms are that would need to be addressed to change it.
Yeah, I think I can help with that part, Lisa, with kind of like, I, here's, you know, here, here's where the name came from, here's where it's codified, here's what we'd need to change, think of those types of, the details of it. I think I could probably do that.
It would also be helpful to know if there is any type of stipulations anywhere that, um, limits what the library can and should be called. Like, I didn't know if, um, when the library was first created, was this, was it ever stated that it has to be called this in perpetuity? And who would make such a charge, since this is a public institution? So, I'm, I'm, I'm just really curious, as opposed to removing the statues, which was this weird. Um, it was a private thing versus a public thing, it was a lot of, I don't know, I just, I'm really curious, as you were saying, to figure out like where this lives, where this decision. Um, how, how codified is it? And is there, like, who gets to change those rules, if there are rules that require change?
And I think the other thing we can probably, about next month, when we, when we talk about this, is how other entities in the area have gone about this process. Notably, the school system, um, changing, changing names for, you know, the various schools in the area. Um, and, you know, that, that, the, the input that they've gathered and so forth. So I think, yeah, I, I agree with Mike, the, the next, next month, I think we need to discuss the, that sort of two-pronged approach Lisa was talking about, can we do this? Um, or, you know, I, I imagine we can, it's just how much is involved? And then where we would gather the input to do this from?
So I think I can work with Thomas to provide some information for next month to answer some of those questions. And, and work with some other of our community partners to see, you know, what, what other, Myra mentioned a, a bunch of other places that have made changes to talk to them about what their process was. So I can lay out a bit of a presentation on what are, you know, who else has done what, basically. Does that sound like enough for an agenda?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you, David, thank you so much.
Welcome, I've got some other, uh, future agenda items, Thomas.
Please, 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 I actually thought we were late on them, so I must have missed.
Just a, a little, a minor issue that we need to adopt, the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Finally, you know, we wait for all of our jurisdictions to approve their budgets, so we're waiting for the last jurisdiction to approve theirs in June. So we will absolutely need a forum in order to pass a budget for fiscal year twenty-three. There'll be a, a vote on officers, as Wendy mentioned, a vote on the five-year plan. Update. A vote on the board meeting and budget schedule with the change suggested today. And then, I, I, I think we're still planning on having a, a policy committee meeting, yeah, so there'll be a policy committee meeting report. Policy committee will be directly before the board meeting.
Okay. Any questions about any of those, any comments? Wonderful, well, thank you all very much for your, uh, thought here, we moved through that at a very good pace. Um, and I think we've given ourselves plenty of time to take the same care and thought into David's evaluation here. Um, if we don't have anything else to talk about on the preceding agenda, we'll go ahead, make the motion to move into our closed session, have that conversation. And then for the public's awareness, uh, we will come back into this meeting for the, um, motions and votes to certify our closed session and to end, uh, this meeting. But we'll take no additional business, uh, from this point on, uh, aside from potentially, uh, approving contracts and things for, uh, the director. So if you don't feel inclined to stick around, feel free to leave us at this point, otherwise, uh, keep an eye on the link, and we should try to be back before five o'clock, uh, to finish those items out. Please.
I moved at the library board, go into a closed session pursuant to the code, uh, to the Code of Virginia, section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one, subsection A one, to discuss the performance evaluation of the library director.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks very much, we will move into closed session, uh, trustees, please find that second link on your. Give me a second to bring it up, for David to bring it up, we'll take a moment here, reconvene. Thank you all very much, you came in person. Yes, dear, we'll meet here before the.
People right after, if that's okay. I think it isn't gonna take more than an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, well, hang out and do most of my story.
Okay, well, hang out and do most of my story.
Hello again, everybody.
Can I hear? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful.
And see you now.
Wonderful.
We might be just the green box, Lisa.
Yes.
Yeah, it was Lisa last time. Yep. Okay, looks like everybody is back with us. Thank you all very much. I will read a resolution of certification of our closed meeting. And then if anyone would like to, we can make a motion to adopt the resolution. Whereas the Jefferson Madison Regional Libraries Board of Trustees has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia certified requires a certification by this Jefferson Madison Regional Library for trustees that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Jefferson Madison Regional Libraries Board of Trustees hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Jefferson Madison Regional Libraries Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion on the resolution?
I move we adopt this resolution.
Thank you very much. I'll call for a voice vote on this. Let's see, we'll start online, I guess. Tony?
Yes.
Thank you. Meredith?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Alita?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The motion will carry.
No, I'm sorry. You should call yourself also.
Yes. I will vote in the affirmative.
Put you on the record.
For that one, that's true. Okay, thank you all very much for your patience in our absence there. We only have a quick couple of matters here and David, Tony and I will schedule a brief meeting with you just to recap our conversation here today. Trustees, I leave it to you to make any motions you deem appropriate. We have a couple of matters before us. First, we can renew the contract and then approve changes.
Okay.
Start in that order.
So I move that we renew David's director's contract for at his current salary for three years. Well, then that comes next, correct?
Well, David, correct me. We need to handle it all in one motion, don't we?
It's fine. I think that would work.
Continue the three-year contract.
At his current salary with?
With 2% raise.
Mm-hmm.
Cost of living and a one-time pay adjustment in accordance with what?
Recently approved.
Recently approved for staff.
To summarize the motion there, renewing David's contract with as written at his current salary with a three-year term, 2% cost of living adjustment and authorizing the one-time pay adjustment that was authorized for other staff. That get to the heart of it?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The motion will carry. And I believe that's all we had to do here today. So sorry for the extra half hour of your time. Thank you all very much for your patience, your thought and consideration in everything. Tony, I will reach out to you by email about setting up that meeting with David. If anyone has any other thoughts, comments, or anything like that that they would like to share with me, please feel free to reach out by email or phone. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing you all next month. Thanks very much. Do we do it or do we just a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Yes, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many days of rest?